Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gust?
Here. Here.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Winkler?
Here.
All right, let's have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, please.
Tess, can you see if we're working?
Yeah, it's live.
Okay, hold on a second, I'll change my... Okay, can you guys see my background?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's stand for the invocation and the pledge. Let's pray. Father God, thank you for the privilege of being part of this district. Please watch over us as we discuss and decide the business to come before us this evening. God, please continue to watch over our students and staff, and we thank you for each and every one of them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that brings us to the approval of the agenda.
This is Rob Winkler, I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
A second, Jerry got seconds. Jerry got second.
Okay, gotcha, hold on just a minute, let me get you in there. Voting is open. Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Gust?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to old business, and first up is the discussion and action on the Village of Woodsfield Tax Increment Financing Ordinance on said parcels and the notice dated 4/7/2020.
Hey, this is Rob Winkler, I got a question.
Okay.
In other words, we got turned down the first one to vote on the second one, is that what we're doing?
Um, I don't...
This is Rob, that is correct, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Well, then I'll make a motion, we turn down the first one.
This is Beverly, I second the motion.
So I will put motion to deny?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, voting is open. Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Gust?
Yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried, that tip is denied. So it brings us to number two on old business, discussion and action dated 4/16/2020.
Rob Winkler, Rob Caldwell, got a question for you.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Winkler.
Oh, I'd say, Rob.
Oh, yeah, hey, how you doing?
All right, hey, now, is this the tape that you, uh, worked on?
Yes, this is the one that we worked on after the last board meeting, when I had the meeting with Jason Hammond and myself, uh, then Christian Williams, our attorney. It went back and forth probably for two days, and then that's when Christian says everything is good. Now, there is one thing on the notice, if you notice that we, uh, it should have been attached. Notice from the village was on April 16th. If you look at Exhibit B, the actual ordinance from the village, and it is in the... Hold on one second. Oh, right at the very, uh, the first paragraph, the whereas paragraph that you noticed, it has a date of April 15th. Uh, I'm not sure if that's just because maybe they drafted the ordinance on the 15th and then sent the notice out on the 16th. I just think we need to make note of that, that that may be a discrepancy or a typo.
Anyone else have a discussion on this? If not, I'll make a motion, we accept this. This is Rob Winkler.
This is Bev, the only thing I had was about that date that I notified Rob of. I think we ought to just approve it with the, with the date change for the notice, so the ordinance corresponds to that dated notice that we received. But I think we could approve it subject to that date change in ordinance.
Yes, that's what I thought when Rob said that.
This is Sarah, Jerry, do you have any other questions or observations?
No, ma'am.
Thanks. Greg, do you?
No.
This is Bev, I'd like to second Ron's motion.
Okay, I put motion to approve, subject to date change, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, voting is open. Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah.
Mr. Gust?
Yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, which brings us to new business. Uh, the approval of the course catalog is, is up first.
Yeah, I just got this email today at 1:52. I haven't had time to look at it, so I might abstain on this. Anybody else get it before me? This is Jerry.
This is Sarah, um, I think that we all got it at the same time, they, if you notice in the administrative content there, it says that, um, there's a few things that they'll have to finalize and put in there. Mrs. Bo hatch, do you want to give a little overview?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't unmute there. Yes, so we've been working on this for a few weeks now. This is probably one of the most comprehensive course catalogs we've had in a while, and everything that is new is in either red or orange. So the, the, every, all the text that's in black is things that were previously there. But the majority of the new courses are straight from ODEs, subject codes, and descriptions that go along with that. It just gives a better layout to all the different pathways that students can follow or choose from. That doesn't necessarily mean that all these courses are going to be offered, but these are the pathways that we can lay out and see where that student interest is, and then be able to build and go from there.
Jennifer, this is Beverly, if there's like enough interest in a course, it will, it can be offered.
If we have the right teacher to instruct it and we have enough interest, then that can be part of that pathway we can build.
Is, is there any way to note the ones that we don't have current teachers for? So, you know, the students are aware, if they're looking at it, that, um, it might not be a possibility, is there any way to note that?
Right, I understand that. If you notice after each description, there's a box for, um, a checkmark beside which building and which grade level the courses will be offered. So now that we have the descriptions, we are, we are asking each building to mark off what they can offer next year based on their staffing, and then if there are any staffing requests. So before it goes out to the students, we'll have that fine tune per each building.
This is Bo hatch, this is Mr. Caldwell. Also, correct me if I'm wrong, but can A not also receive college credit for a lot of these courses as well?
Yes, correct, there are a lot of courses that will show them a pathway of receiving college credit, and that is free credit. It's different than CCP credit, because a lot of this goes through the career technical pathway, but there's a potential for our students to come out with an associate's degree out of high school, or maybe near an associate's degree for taking very similar courses that they are now, but just making sure we have them mapped correctly and doing the necessary paperwork behind the scenes so that the students can have that credit.
Hey, Rob Winkler, I got a question. Can we table this to the next meeting? Because I, someone said I had some emails and I can't get over this.
This is Sarah, Mrs. Bo hatch, does that interfere with your timeline of if we would table it, or?
Um, I understand, and I knew that was a possibility because of the lateness of everything, it took a long time to build. But, um, if that's what you choose to do, then we can go ahead, we, we, we at least have a better idea now of what those courses can be and where those pathways lie. And I understand if you choose to take some more time to look at it.
This is Cindy Brill, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure if everybody, um, completely under, understands the structures of those pathways. Our districts approve for those, those pathways, this is just the first time we're exposing it in the book, so everyone can see them. Just, just the help, that it's a visual that more parents can have that conversation with their students, and the students can have conversations with their teachers and counselors, and they're seeing what we already have approved. I think in the past, the old one I looked at would say a pathway, but it never showed the courses that were under there, and it never showed which courses had college credit to it. To, so it's a, it's a good visual that the team's been working on.
This is Bo hatch, this is Mr. Caldwell again. Maybe by putting it off till the next meeting, maybe by then we'll have a more clear picture of, uh, after our principals are able to check mark, what they can offer after looking over their staffs. That might be a more clear picture for, uh, for the board members to see. And also, I wanted to make mention that if, uh, we have in one of our buildings, we have a large number of students that are interested, but say we only have one or two on another campus, we are possibly looking at being able to do that, whether it be through some type of a distant learning, or, uh, what was the other word I'm looking for, uh, an independent study, kind of like they do, some of our students do at this time with the big course. If that makes sense, do you want to clarify that, Jen?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, so if we have some interest in one building and it's not offered there, we can do some creative things like distance learning or independent study for a student, if there's one student and you have a teacher that's available.
This is Bo hatch, I don't think everybody caught the end of that, I don't know.
Okay, so similar to what you said, is, you know, we can do distance learning or independent study if that course is not offered in that building, or if we have very low numbers that doesn't allow a teacher to have the, a class for one student versus something else in their schedule for more students. Um, with the career technical pathways, like Cindy said, that most of those are already approved, we just are now showing what those courses are. If we go back, oh, probably six or seven years ago, in career tech, we assigned students to a program, and then they were just handed what they, they went to, like, if they were welding, you just go to the welding lab. And a few years ago, that transitioned to specific courses, and now we're being even more intentional of what those courses look like and the pathways, and in addition, whether they can get college credit by taking it in the high school. Outside of those courses, the ones that we've added to the regular high schools would be things like honors, world history, honors, American history, some courses, that's, that's also career tech. I'm trying to think off the top of my head what other things we've added that aren't in this. Some extra, um, health credits, Bellsville would like to have some extra credits, half master courses in health-related courses.
And those, those could be used as electives?
Right.
Jennifer, this is Bev. If, you know, like in CCP, the teachers had to be certified to teach those classes, is that not, is there a similar requirement for the career tech college classes, or something different?
Jennifer, I might be able to help, help with that. Um, there are requirements, uh, there are some licensure requirements, and each of those courses, because they're technical oriented, um, the, the teacher has to be certified, it's, they, they're a little bit different to where they don't have to have the masters in, in the field. Like some of those restrictions, we might have to offer college credit in a different way. Uh, but our teachers that are teaching career tech are all certified to be able to do these courses. Um, also, Bev, you might have, you might be interested in this, I want to tag back onto a question you'd ask, uh, before, do we have certified teachers that could teach all of those courses? Um, there's a unique way that we can handle this for smaller amounts of students, we may have, we may have a single student in the entire district that has an interest to go down and take, let's say, I'm just going to pull a course, anatomy and physiology, which is a bad example, but I'm just naming a course. And maybe they're the only student who wants to do it, but their desire to have that course on their transcript because of what they want to do when they graduate is important to them. We possibly, if we didn't have the teacher in-house to do it, um, there, we have a team like Linda O'Connor and James, um, James Rubel and Mark that are working, Mark Romick, they're working with our colleges, that we have some ability to use a professor from a college with some of these articulations that we have, to do a partnership to allow that to happen for that student. Um, we also have simultaneous credit that can happen with these courses, which makes it more valuable for when we have smaller populations of kids within our school buildings. And also, another way that we can do it is, um, we can use credit flex where the student might be learning in another situation, then we just have a teacher, a record that is verifying that there was mastery of the competency, and once they have that, they can receive credit for that course. So we have multiple ways that we can help a student, um, get the credit, but if the credit, uh, if, if the student doesn't know that the courses don't exist, they never know to ask. And so now we have a better course catalog that a parent and a child can sit down and help do that program of study and see all the options, and then they come to us. Um, I would suggest, as we're working with our principals and, and Jennifer's leading that, that when we have a group of kids, we have enough kids across the district that want a specific course, then we know where we need to target our resources as far as our teaching staff, where we need to go and rearrange. Um, this also takes out courses that don't become popular anymore, you know, it's trendy sometimes for certain programs, I'm going to guess, because we're going through a pandemic right now, that the health field is going to go skyrocketing through the roof of kids wanting to get into that field. Um, and then it might tail, fail off at some point, and we would see that through offerings, but because a student asked for it, then the leadership team sits back and they determine if we can do it, but we're never going to know where we should really be targeting if we don't allow the, the students to come to us and say, this is where our interests are. We are approved for them already, we're just exposing it now in a handbook that everyone can look at and start helping direct and counsel students through, um, their learning pathways. If that helps explain how we can better use, um, courses, whether there's one student wanting it, or if there's a whole lot of students wanting to take the course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Rob Winkler, I have to make a mission, table this till next meeting.
A second.
Hey, enter in there, motion to table until next meeting. Voting is open. I got you, Jerry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Gust?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
The motion is carried, and that brings us to discussion and update on school closing and reconvening.
This is Rob Caldwell again, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Now, I'll give you a brief rundown, uh, and then if any of the admin team wants to join in afterwards, uh, feel free to do so. Last Friday evening, I got a, a phone call, and I was invited to join in on a teleconference with the governor and the lieutenant governor and the state superintendent on Saturday afternoon. There was me and possibly, uh, ten to twelve other superintendents. Uh, we discussed topics about the remainder of this school year, any barriers that we're facing, and, uh, believe it or not, it seemed like everybody was facing the same barriers as we are, which is internet access. I mean, even our urban areas, inner-city schools was, was having issues. We also discussed spring sports, and we briefly discussed the upcoming 2020 slash 21 school year. Because like the governor mentioned, in the telemeeting, he said, uh, you know, who's to say that come August, it's not going to be the same as it is right now. So we just need to more or less take things one day at a time and, uh, keep getting updates from the governor. As you're all aware, he did make the announcement on Monday that, uh, schools will be closed for the remainder of the school year, spring sports are, are canceled. After that announcement, uh, actually today, we had an admin meeting, uh, this morning. We discussed quite a few things, but what we more or less decided was, we're just going to stay the course. We're going to offer our distant learning, our remote learning. Also, if any students are needing paper pencil packets, uh, principals are reaching out, making all calls, uh, using social media to make people aware of that. Actually, we're doing a, uh, I think we're doing a fabulous job with our, our teachers and our administrators, uh, making people aware, uh, and also, our teachers are learning as, as they're moving forward and doing a lot better job of the distant learning. Actually, I've gotten quite a few emails and text messages from parents that are very appreciative of what our teachers and administration, uh, you know, they're thanking them for their hard work and their dedication for, throughout this time. And that's pretty nice to hear or see when you get an email, and, you know, your parents complimenting our teachers and, uh, our administration. And I, I want to give a shout out to our teachers and our administrators for all the hard work they've been doing. Our lunch program, uh, pretty much staying status quo. I'm thinking we're doing anywhere from, uh, five to 600 lunches a day throughout the district. And I want to thank all those people that are helping, wanting, or that are willing to come in and help pack the lunches and transport them to our drop-off locations. So more or less, with that being said, uh, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to ask, or if any else on, on the admin team wants to join in and, and mention anything differently, please feel free to do so.
Rob, this is Greg.
Yes.
I had a question, uh, someone called last night, is there any discussion about trying to do anything for the graduating seniors?
Ms. Bo hatch, you want to elaborate on that? We did have some discussion today.
Sure, this is Jennifer, we talked about that this morning at our principals' meeting, and each high school, now that we've, we definitely have an answer of us being out the rest of the year, they are going to discuss that with their staff and with their seniors, and with, it's going to be, at this point, an individual building decision. There's some different scenarios out there, like virtual, or holding off until it's safe to have groups of people, but we don't know when that is. So with all the unknowns, it's really hard to come up with a concrete decision at this point, but, um, we're going to do the best we can to show the, show the best proper recognition that we can for these seniors and all.
Mr. Shoemaker, I mean, actually, if, uh, if we would find out here in a month or so that we're allowed to come back and, uh, stay-at-home orders are lifted, or the social distancing or whatever, I mean, I, I, you know, if we have to have a graduation for the class of 2020, if we have to wait until July or August to do so, I would not have one problem with that. I think, I...
Yeah, I, I think that...
We, we do need to do something for our seniors, and I'm also thinking the same way. And I'm also thinking the same way for the prom. I mean, if they're, you know, if, if, if so, if we have to hold a prom in July, I think we should do it.
Yeah, I, I just, the, the question I would have about that is if they do open things back up and we get back to some type of normalcy. You're going to run into people are going to be running the vacations like crazy and logistically. To plan something that quickly, I think would be. Well, I mean, I'm not saying not to or anything like that, but, uh, you know how, uh, how many people have cabin fever and. And are looking to get out. And as soon as things are lifted, uh, the people are going to start moving like crazy. I just, I've had a couple of people call. With, uh, questions about that. And I said, I said the same thing. I said, how, how can you plan something or no? When we have no idea when this is going to get back to normal. So you've answered my question. That's, that's good.
Hey Greg, this is Jennifer. I just want to make sure everybody's clear that thi- this does not prohibit that student from receiving their. Transcript and that their graduating staffs wins for the year.
Yeah.
Ceremony at this time, but the students who are on track to graduate will receive that transcript and, and be graduated.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was the question. I think the question was just the recognition or some type of ceremony.
Right. And I, I will add that the, um, principals have talked about at the elementary level, the eighth grade and the kindergarten doing something more of a video. Tribute to the students.
Yeah, that's something I thought that even if it was something like. Mr. Caldwell, whoever else virtually, and then they could log on or like YouTube or whatever and watch the ceremony and then everybody's name gets announced. Uh, just a thought. At least it would be something.
Right, and W T V, T O V nine has offered that to all the area schools. So there's, there's a lot of people stepping up. To offer, some are charging for it and some are not, but. You know, definitely something we need to work through in the next week or two and get answers out as best we can.
Actually, next Wednesday, when we have our next admin meeting, that's going to be a.
Okay, tha- thank you. You're welcome.
Rob, this is Sarah. Um, I just wanted to say along the, the lines of, you know, people appreciating. The efforts that you guys are making. Um, I'd like to add on Facebook, I've seen a couple of the videos. Um, Pow Hatton Elementary did one and it was super. It, you know, it had, um, their staff, maybe every single staff member, but, um. With signs to the students and encouraging and, um, they put that out on Facebook. I believe River Elementary did one as well. I missed it though. And, um, if the other schools have done, I missed it. I apologize for that, but. That's just great of that staff taking the time to do that, to make sure that they're still connecting. That's just. That they've done, you know, like you said, they've gone out to, um, houses and driveway and the birthday stuff and. I just want to, you know, echo your shout-outs and I really appreciate them doing that stuff too.
Thank you.
I second that, Mrs. Jerry Gus. I, I'm, I'm appreciative to of these people.
All right, more discussion on the update of school closings and reconvenings. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second. Jerry Gus. Keep forgetting. I'm used to seeing all these pretty faces and I'm not seeing them. It's hard to, hard to, you know, keep on track, I guess.
Voting is open.
I'm smiling, Jerry.
Love it.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gust?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schumaker?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody be careful.